Good afternoon. Thank you for, um, hanging out at this very long day of meetings for the joint special meeting of the Judicial and Public Safety Legislative Committee. Um, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And Sally, can we get a roll call, please? Oh. Here.
Chair Evans. Member Chaplin. Member Childress.
Yeah.
Member Eckoff. Member Galassi.
Yeah.
Member Guston. Member Kuduski. Member Ozog. Member Schwartzy. Member Tornatori.
Yeah.
Member you. Members Zay.
All right. Thank you. And do we have any public comment? Oh, member Cahill is here. Oh, member LaPlante. Okay, is everybody here? So Jason, do we need to read? Do we need to read that? Okay, so let me just start by thanking everybody for joining us at the special joint meeting of the Legislative Committee in JPS. Today, we will be discussing Illinois Senate Bill 595. I've always wanted to do that, Paula. Um, so today is an opportunity to learn more about the proposed amendment to SB 595, proposed by Senate President Harmon, encouraging the Illinois Supreme Court to establish a framework for a statewide office of public defense trial support, which is what it's called. Today, we'll hear from DuPage County's Chief Public Defender Jeff York. Chair Evans, do you have a, any comment?
No, I want to get this done as quickly as possible. And, but I will say that I'm, I always get excited to see Jeff York's presentations. So thank you for doing this.
And I also just want to let you know that there is another opportunity to participate in this discussion and to hear from other authorities on the subject and from other counties during this Friday's ISECO's Justice and Public Safety Committee meeting at 10:00 AM via Zoom. Guests will include James Morpheu, a partner at Sorling and Northrup, Carol LaFever Smith, Director of the Illinois Supreme Court Office of Statewide Pretrial Services, and Kathy Saltmarsh, Executive Director of the Illinois Sentencing Policy Advisory Council and Chair of the Criminal Indigent Defense Task Force. So if you would like to join that Zoom meeting at 10:00 AM on Friday, and there's our chairwoman for the ISECO committee, let me know or let Cheryl Markey know, and she will pass along the Zoom meeting details to you. So it's just another opportunity to have the discussion. Okay, without further ado, Jeff York.
Okay, so that meeting on Friday at ISECO, the people that will be speaking are the proponents of this bill. Just so it's clear, it's the proponents, it's from the AOIC. So I'll get into that in a minute. So anyway, thank you for inviting me and responding to my concerns. And so I should clarify, these are my thoughts and opinions. I don't speak for all. All public defenders. Let's talk about the current law. Public defenders are created from state statute. My position, I was appointed by a vote of the circuit judges. It's the same process for appointing an associate judge. They also decide when they get tired of me for any reason or not at all. The system has worked here in DuPage, really thanks to the quality of the judges we have here. And so we're an important part of the system. And that's been recognized by both our current state's attorney and our former state's attorney, who was a big proponent of making sure we had a strong public defender's office. Just to review kind of what we do, we do criminal cases for indigent clients. That's the bulk of what we do. And we do other stuff as well. We're involved in pretrial, juvenile, mental health commitment. And we're busy. This is our current structure. We're currently at 55. We were at 58. Our head count, I think, is a little higher than that. And I plan to add, to add up to six lawyers this year if I can possibly do it. So the highest we've been is 58. That still was under our current head count. I haven't been able to fill as fast as I would like. The way a public defender's office looks, operates, or how effective it is, is different in different parts of Illinois. Our office is different than most, if not all. And that's actually something I'm proud of. We have mental health clinicians. Most offices don't have that luxury. They assess, help people get benefits, do mitigation, placement into treatment, help make appointments with doctors and psychiatrists, help them comply with probation and all kinds of things. In addition, the way our office is structured, I have the ability to pivot like I did this year when I went from three people assigned to pretrial to five. Because in order for that courtroom to work effectively, I thought I needed to do that. In terms of what it costs, our budget is similar to other counties. We're on the left there in the blue. We're at six and a half million or so. Lake is slightly higher than us. Kane is less than us. Will is more than us. Cook County's over $100 million. Over the past several years, we've welcomed several attorneys from other offices that would rather work for us. We don't see the reverse. We haven't to this point. We enjoy incredible independence from the judiciary and tremendous support from the board. We have resources that other offices are in awe of, and statewide people say that they consider us the model. However, other public defender's offices aren't as lucky. They aren't independent. A chief judge says, don't hire this person. Don't ask for more money. Don't complain about the caseloads. They control their budgets. And whether or not they can ask for an expert or an investigator on an individual case. They also don't have the resources. County boards give them peanuts, sometimes not even actual office space. Some small counties, private attorneys are given a contract to handle public defense work. So either there isn't enough work or the county doesn't want to pay for a full-time staff. Let me take you through some history of how we got to this point that I'm presenting to you after a very long county board day. The Sixth Amendment Center is an independent organization nationwide that looks at criminal defense services throughout the country. I'm fairly certain it was at the request of the Illinois Supreme Court, and they gathered data from several counties during COVID. I think they had six counties in their study. DuPage was one of those. And it was evaluation of all the public defender services across the country, or I'm sorry, across Illinois. The results and recommendations in that report were not flattering. And the report was incredibly critical of the judiciary's role in public defender's offices. I didn't bring that report, but I'd say it's two or three inches thick. Based on that, the Illinois Supreme Court created their own task force. I think out of result of the Sixth Amendment Center report. And in my opinion, decided they could fix it themselves. I think it was a good idea in theory. They came up with a report in October of 2023. I should say the Sixth Amendment Center report came out in June of 21. The task force came out with a report in October of 2023. The majority of the members on that board were judges who are in that task force. The PDs that were in the room, I was not included, were not given much weight. And worse, in my opinion, is the task force was cloaked in secrecy. We weren't allowed to see drafts, share ideas. Several times in the report, there are references to those with differing opinions. Where they refer to a minority of the task force members. That's the public defenders in the room. Because we're super trendy, other entities other than the Supreme Court have been involved in how we should be doing public defending. American Bar Association in 2023 last summer came out 10 principles of a public defense delivery system. Principle number one is independence from judicial or political influence. Just, that's independence, number one, principle number one. This is what we are afraid of. When a public defender crosses a judge and does something that they don't like, they get let go. That's happened. And it's uncomfortable for us. Again, I think I'm in a unique position because either I'm stupid, naive, or I'm not worried about being fired. I, I, I know that Judge Wheaton understands my position and supports it. I know this board has supported me. So I feel comfortable in being very vocal about what my opinion is, but that is not necessarily the position that other public defenders are in. Academia has also gotten involved, Northwestern specifically. And I'm going to get more into them in a minute, but they did a study about how much would it cost to fix this? Last summer, at the very end of the legislative year, Illinois created a new statute called the Public Defender Fund. It was a special fund. It was very, very late. They put $10 million on it. There's 102 counties in Illinois. We received 113,000. Counties got between 90,000 and 130,000, more or less. And there was some kind of math problem of how they got there. An example of the broken system that we currently have, this fund was administered by the AOIC. That's the Administrative Office of Illinois Courts. It's the same group that will be presenting on Friday and the same group that presented Senate Bill 595. Some downstate counties just took the money and the public defender had no access to it. I should say there were further instructions that the Public Defender Fund for individual public defender's office was not supposed to supplant current budgets. It was really at the discretion of the public defender for needs that they had. Some people wanted to buy new computers. Some people wanted to hire a secretary. I used it to enhance our case management system, pay for interns and some other things. It was, we, we had complete discretion in terms of what to spend, although I did go through the procurement process. Too early? Okay, so so, sorry. So the problem is some downstate counties just absorbed the money and didn't allow the public defender to have access to it. During finance this morning, one of the chief public defenders downstate in a small county told our chief public defender group that she's leaving the public defender's office. That public defender engaged with the AOIC to try to get access to the money that the AOIC gave her county. And they really didn't have an answer. They're not equipped, in my opinion, to distribute funds because either a chief judge or a county board could just take the money and have. So let's get to the Supreme Court and their annual report to the General Assembly. Early this year, their strategic goal number one is to fix public defending. And essentially, they want to create a statewide public defender system. I think it's a laudable goal to help. And I've said many times, I'm thankful for all the attention and desire for people to help with, there are considerable problems in other counties. They recognize it's a constitutional obligation of the state to fund. Illinois has always been a county-funded system for public defense. And there's wide disparity of county or between counties, wide disparities between the services people are able to offer based on those resources. So they want full state funding to create a statewide office, and they want it under judicial authority. I am not in favor of any of those things. I don't believe the state will be able to fully fund. This is an expensive proposition. You're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. I don't think a statewide office is the solution to a problem, and it certainly will negatively impact us. I think if you're going to start averaging things out, if we're the best, we won't be anymore. And being under judicial authority, as I showed you before, I think is a, is a problem. It's not a problem for me, but it's a problem statewide. AOIC was put in charge of this. They made fancy handouts. You may have seen them. If you haven't, it's part of the materials for the meeting on Friday. And then they have Senate Bill 595, Senate Amendment Number One, and it's called the Office of Public Defender Trial Support. And I want to be clear of what it says and what it doesn't say. For number one, in the little sub one about halfway down that page, they're going to provide support to public defenders upon request. The amount of money they're talking about for that part is minimal. We're talking a million dollars or so spread amongst 100 counties. It's $10,000. And frankly, I don't, I would rather not have it. I don't think that's, well, that isn't their main focus. Their main focus is a creation of a statewide public defender. And in meetings with them, they've been very clear that that's what they're going to do. They have already set in place a planning process to essentially come up with a statewide system and then propose that in legislation next year or the year after. I had a million questions. And I essentially was told, don't worry about it. And it was given very vague answers. I wanted to see further plans that they had, that they indicated they had more detailed plans other than this. This is pretty wide open. And frankly, the AOIC doesn't need a stat, statute to do this. They can do this without permission. It's encouraging the Supreme Court to establish a framework. Go ahead. Knock your socks off. You don't need a statute to do it. I asked to see their further plans and see more details, and I was told no. And I asked them to table this until the fall session so public defenders could help them with this proposal because public defenders had absolutely zero input into this proposal. And I was told no. So I have concerns with both the content and also the process. As I mentioned, there's been basically no public defender input. This Senate Bill 595 was a shell bill, so it was already on third reading. Right now, they could pass this out of the Senate with one hour's notice, which means I've been on a call already twice and will be a third time this week to potentially go down to Springfield if we think the bill might be called to object. There continues to be minimal public defender input. And in their comments in meetings with us and other groups are troubling or I guess confusing to me. And I essentially told, we're going to be told how it's going to be, and we should just accept it. What I don't think they understand is we're lawyers, and worse than that, we're defense lawyers. Our job is to resist and object. And so if anyone on their planning committee had been an actual public defender, they may have thought of that. So why would it be bad, right? I wouldn't have gotten the facilities that you guys paid for, and thank you, right? If I was a statewide agency, my ability to attract and retain attorneys would be minimized. And it could be that I don't have the ability to hire. I have to wait for the statewide office to give me somebody. In other statewide systems, the state hires and then deploys you to wherever county they think appropriate. And so it could be that I might get more experienced people 10 years from now, once they've filled all the other counties that need more help. I have the ability to be incredibly choosy on hires. If the circuit here decided to start a new program, I can't add staff to do it. I've been able to foster county relationships with IT, with finance, with the board. Being a state entity, I think, would hamper that. I agree that effective representation is critical, but I think it would be hampered here. I can't keep up with the state's attorney's office. If the state's attorney's office got some new shiny toy that I would want to, you're, you have been very supportive of that. When they got raises, we went together. I wouldn't have the ability to do that anymore. Policy decisions, what to do about COVID, working from home, all the things I do to keep people happy and in my office, and I have an incredible retention rate would be minimized if a statewide agency is making these decisions. A very big concern to my staff, our pensions. If we're state employees, we would lose IMRF. And in general, and I, I guess this is the naive or dumb part, name an effective, well-managed, well-respected state agency, because I can't. And I don't want to become one. I don't think clients would get as good of a representation. I don't think the system would work as well. And our ability to cooperate and coordinate will be hampered. I want to say your impact has been significant, and I want to thank you. If you didn't know, the county has taken an opposition to this bill as currently drafted. And because of that, Cook County has gotten more involved than they were. Lake is monitoring, Lake Legislative Team at Lake County told their public defender's office that I was speaking today. And there, I think they plan to oppose formally as well. There is a small working group, members of the Illinois Public Defender Association and Illinois Council of Chief Defenders I'm a part of. I'm part of that working group trying to ask for modifications to the court's bill. There are other interested parties that there are people, Northwestern advocacy groups, the ACLU, and I've been in meetings with all of them. Northwestern bill, which is the name I gave it, which they hate. They have an alternative legislation that's not just one statute. It's kind of taking the whole public defender statute and revising a bunch of it. It's not perfect. There's been several iterations so far. I will say they've been willing to listen to and work with us and ask us for input. It would provide assistance to smaller, smaller places downstate and essentially would leave us alone. There are parts of it that still need work, in my opinion. And there still would be a statewide body, but it really wouldn't impact services here nearly as much as the court's proposal that's not yet been proposed. They've been working on it for some time now, but it hasn't yet been proposed. So how are we involved? There was a Tribune story where I was pretty vocal that this is a bad idea. I've engaged with the county's lobbyists. I've asked for your help. I've gotten it. I'm part of two working groups, one about 20 public defenders, one about seven, both of which are working to try to both influence the bill that's current and work with Northwestern or anybody else interested to help solve the problems that exist downstate. As soon as, so what will happen next? As soon as Senate Bill 595 could be called would be next Wednesday. That's the next, the Senate is not in session this week. We, I did expect the AOIC to respond to our requests for changes to their bill, gave them, to them about two weeks ago under a very tight timeline on their end. We haven't heard back. I don't know what that means, but the materials that they put for the ISECO meeting are exactly the same that they gave us a month ago. I don't know that there's a ability to come together and all work together. I hope so. But I don't want others to try to fix the statewide system and break us in the process. This has kind of become my job for the last month or so, and will continue to be. I think this is important. I also think I'm in a position where I can, I can do it when others can't. I don't need anything right now. And, and I think because we're in a process of negotiating with the current bill, there may be a time where I send out an email or a text and say, I really need some opposition to this. Or whatever. But I also don't want to blow it up, knowing the people who are, we're dealing with. It's the Supreme Court and the Senate President. I'm not, I recognize that that is a difficult group of people to oppose. So I don't necessarily need anything yet, and it could be that I do. I just, I'm hoping through this negotiation process, they'd be willing to work with us and actually take our input in deciding what we will be whenever this process is over.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Wow. I see, uh, member Guston?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for my tardiness. I was in another meeting. However, I, I, I'm wondering, is there a possibility of having a provision, and maybe I missed it in the legislation, of an opt-out or an opt-in? If this is going to be mandatory, then maybe an opt-in provision would be appropriate for some of those smaller counties that don't have public defenders, where maybe they want to save some tax dollars because they have to hire a private attorney to be their PD. So has that conversation happened? Because it seems like this is on a fast train, fast track right now. And it would be nice to slow it down and get, get people that are doing the jobs input to see how this could be better formed.
I, I think in my discussions with people involved in the Colorado counties in Chicago, I think we all are pretty united that none of us want to be part of a statewide system. So I do think that that's a possibility. However, I don't know. Right now, there's no opt-out in the bill as drafted. And I don't know if that's what will end up happening, but certainly that is an option. I think it's a last resort. I understand how you'd want to standardize some things or set standards, minimum standards or whatever. So I think an opt-out would be, I don't know where you draw that line, but I certainly think that is an option, yes. It's just not currently part of the legislation.
Member Chaplin?
Thank you so much. And thanks so much for the presentation, Jeff. And I just realized why I like you so much. Because you said you are one that you're a public defender and you oppose and resist all the time. And that is what I like about you. But I was going to ask you, so I know in DuPage you have it good. You know, you have our chief judge who you work well with and the county board who you work well with. And we saw how that one judge was removed because of the chief judge. But what happens if you don't have a friendly chief judge and you don't have the county board that supports you? So, so this is where I think it's very complicated, right? Because we're not always all going to be here, and we're not always going to have the same chief judge. So how do we address that concern without blowing up the whole system, right?
I think that's what other counties, many other counties face. They either have a supportive judge and not a supportive board, or the reverse, or neither. Right? And I'm very fortunate and I know it.
Right.
I do think that systemically, it's probably a better idea that we are not a political body or a judicial body, because it seems like a conflict, right? But, I mean, so that's kind of one of the things is independence, because it was recommended by the American Bar Association. It's awkward for us. There have been situations where you have bad results because of the political nature of it. You know, the worst thing in the world, in my opinion, a couple of years ago, a Lake County initiative from some legislator up there was that I would be a county board-appointed office. No offense. So you don't know who would be best run a public defender's office, right? So making it a political body is probably not the best option. Some of the options on the table now include making it a statewide political body, where the governor and the, you know, the majority leader and minority leader, and they all get appointments. And I understand you have to make people happy, but I don't think that making it a statewide political office is, I think that's a worse idea than making it a county political office. So, so you're right. Ideally, we would, through this process, have some independence at some point, right? So that we are not beholden to political or judicial.
Yes, yes, yes. And then I know you said you don't need anything from us right now, but then you said you would want us to come out and oppose than this bill.
That's up to you. I mean, but certainly I think, you know, obviously you know important people. I just, I'm not ready to push that big button yet.
Okay, okay.
Because we're negotiating, I don't want to necessarily rock the boat.
Okay.
I'm doing plenty of that on my own.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, I don't, oh, member Garcia.
Yeah, real quickly before we lose quorum. I just wanted to thank you for your presentation today. I, I think it's frustrating that they have gotten no input from the public defenders on this. I think that is, is very, very wrong on their part. I know when we were down there on our lobby day with our, our people here, I know Chair Evans was actually, you know, pushing for the carve-out solution, and as we all were, and, and I'm hoping that they bring this back or slow down the process so that it can actually get some, some indication from the public defenders on how they, they think it might work on this. So I just wanted to say that that, that's my hope for this.
And I should mention Nick, Cheryl, Jason, our lobbyist Chip, they've all been great. I've never had to really work as directly with them on stuff like this, but they've all been very available and very attentive to helping me navigate this.
Thank you. And you know what? We, apparently because this is a discussion, the state's attorney, Connor, says we don't need a quorum, so that's okay. But I do want everybody to know. I do want everybody to know that, that our lobbyist Chip Humes is in the audience. Thank you so much for being here. Jeff, I do have a couple of questions. Number one, how will 595, how, how is the proposed funding on that? Like, would every county have to chip in five bucks or what? Not five bucks, you know, I'm joking, but chip in related to their population or something?
So 595 is the planning process. 595 is the planning process for the second stage where statewide PD would be a thing. I think they've asked for $5 million to build an office to do the planning. So they asked for an appropriation of, of $5 million. I don't know if that's part of the legislation. I don't think it is, but I think that's part of a budget that the court is submitting as part of their budget process. So the counties wouldn't have to pay for that part.
So that leads me to, if the counties don't have to pay for that part, if this did go through, then could we bolster our county budget with what we already have and just do our own thing anyway?
I don't, so I don't know. If I became a statewide entity, I don't think you could gift me money. I think that's the problem. I think if I'm a complete, if I'm a statewide agency, I'm a separate agency. I don't think that you could supplement. And so I think that's the problem is that if we wanted to do other things here as a county and we have, we would lack that, I would lack that ability. I would have to just say no.
You know, this is a smaller question, but I'm wondering, on page 15, why did that judge remove the Champagne County public defender? Can they remove for, for something egregious, obviously, or for something minute like, I don't like the color of your tie?
Yes.
They can. Wow.
The current law, yes. It is at the will of the circuit judges, which is uncomfortable, right? If you get, so it's, it's, it's been fine for me, but it's not been fine for all public defenders. And there have been stories throughout the years where that's kind of happened. My understanding of what happened in Champagne was their caseloads were very, very high. And they said, we're not going to take murder cases anymore. You're going to have to farm them out to the private bar because we just can't keep up. And then that was the impetus that they were dismissed. That's, I, that's my understanding. I don't know if that's true, but.
Thank you again for your report. Chip, I want to ask you to come up here if you, if you have a few words to say about this. Because my next question, I'm not sure if it's you, Chip, or you, Jeff, to say, you know, why are they so resistant? Why are they so resistant to putting the brakes on 595? Because it would seem to me that they would want the input from public defenders, that they would welcome that and embrace that. So what is the big rush? What did you say? A train, a rush on the train to, to, to get to the station? What, what is the big deal on? You know, I mean, Jeff just said this could be voted on as early as Wednesday. And when I just slow it down and do it right, if this is where they want to go. Thank you.
Yeah, so happy to take that part by part. A pleasure to be with you all. I will be very brief because I know you've all had a very long day. So. So it's not uncommon to tack language on to a shell bill at this point in session. And just from a procedural standpoint, that bill, Jeff's correct, that bill, you know, that amendment can be posted, heard in hearing with an hour notice. Then it would have to go subsequently to the Senate floor to be passed. It would still have to go through the traditional process in the House. So the deadlines for committee, that, that process would remain intact. Not sure that gives Jeff any comfort at the moment, but just, just so everyone understands the process. So to the point of why they won't engage with public defenders, honestly, I have no idea. I assume that this is a decision from the Administrative Office of Illinois Courts. And they are probably not really interested in public defenders opinions at the moment, right? So that being said, you know, the nuance of this bill being in the Senate, I mean, there's probably, we're, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that our position and Jeff's position is well known throughout all of our relationships. I'm very comfortable that we'll have much more. I say much more time. It's almost May 1st, but we'll have much more time going through the traditional process in the House. And then we can ensure that all of Jeff's concerns, which I mean, I thought that was an excellent PowerPoint. It's really the reason I'm here was to get a little more educated on it. I'm sure we'll have the ability to articulate those in a meaningful way in the House, right? And process wise, Jeff's 100% correct. This is kind of the tea for the subsequent legislation that could come in six months, two years, 10 years, never or tomorrow, that actually establishes this legislatively, right? So not to unsound the alarm by any means, but that again, gives us an opportunity to go through the process. And, you know, advocate, you know, for a carve out, you know, population threshold, any of those things, because the reality is collar counties are very well represented, right? Folks that don't have access to counsel, Jeff's doing a great job representing those folks. And that's something we don't really want to see diminished for the folks you represent.
You know, the only question, and we, I will call on member Gaston also. You know, a lot of us, we all have relationships with our own, you know, state senators, local. Would you recommend that we independently reach out to them also, or is that too much noise and that we should be more unified in our message?
You know, I'm, I'm a huge advocate for all of your individual relationships with your other elected officials, right? I think that is probably, you know, something that most people overlook is the how much power that you folks have and how important you are to those folks. So I don't ever think that's a bad. I don't see any downside to you picking up the phone and calling your state rep, your senator and saying, hey, we had this presentation and we've learned all these things like this is extremely concerning to us as an organization. There's nothing wrong.
Okay.
I think that's always helpful.
Well, let me caution you that actually you can do that as an individual. You can do that as Lucy Evans. But it's against our board rules to individually advocate on, on behalf of the county.
Sure.
Unless it's okayed by the legislative committee.
So is it Lucy Chang Evans, the voter and not Lucy Chang Evans, DuPage County Board Member? Okay.
Not my roles, just according to the board roles.
That's well above my pay grade.
And member Gaston had a question?
Yeah, I mean, the one thing I'm looking at, I know that there's a lot of conversation and there's a lot of input from our defender's office, but I really think that you as a lobbyist could keep it in your brain how we can opt out or not be a part of it. Cause it's going to move forward like a train. That's all going off the tracks. But we really need to have, be able to have a solution for our area because not every area is the same.
Yeah, I totally understood. I, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I think from a process perspective, it would be very difficult to form any carve out of the existing legislation as it reads today. Because it is essentially the study, right, of the framework, which obviously Jeff has been told what's coming next, right? But, you know, as we kind of walk back through our toolbox, you know, I think that is something we would probably die on the hill for is, you know, at, at, we don't really approve of the process in, in general or the overall theme of this, but at the end of the day, you know, we're really just asking to be left alone.
Well, and I was surprised to see policy issues coming out of a Supreme Court. That to me was very awkward. And, and it's like, okay, whatever. But now we deal with what we have to deal with. So thank you. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Other comments or questions? All right, let me just take two? No. Okay, let me just thank you both. Chip Humes, Jeff York for coming in and presenting to us. Very much appreciated. Please let me know what you want from us in the future so we can help you in any way we can. Thank you so much and thank you all for being here. I would like to ask if there's any old business? New business? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Second, all right, all in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.